I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Eau Claire School Board. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have two helpers from Troop 36 who are going to come up to the microphone and lead us in the pledge. Thanks for coming tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nice job. Thank you to all those who are joining us this evening and to those who are watching via the livestream on the district website and on valleymediaworks.org. This broadcast is also on WRFP LP 101.9 FM and Charter Channel 994. Secretary Iverson, are we in compliance with open meetings law notification?
Yes, we are.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please, for verification of quorum?
Commissioner Beekah?
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Here.
Commissioner Lugan Bell?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Boo?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. That brings us to our public forum this evening. All are welcome to address the board for up to four minutes. You can speak regarding any topic related to the school district, except for remarks that are personal complaints about any school personnel or person connected with the school district. So our first person signed up to speak tonight is Justin Hendrickson. And I believe the microphone's on, so just state your name and address.
Justin Hendrickson, 1324 Caden Court. On November 19th, the school board voted to approve the proposal for listening sessions by the Demographic and Trends Committee. After reviewing the proposal, I am disappointed in the lack of substance in the plan and confused why it was approved in its current state. The proposal did not outline who would be attending the meeting. It is still unclear if some or all of the demographic and trends will be present. Additionally, we request clarification on whether or not the school board members will be present to talk with parents during these sessions. As you can imagine, the turnout for Roosevelt will be large, so we hope that we can have multiple school board members available to speak. The proposal added a new third option, but the details were to be determined, and the given deadline was before the first listening session. This is unacceptable. The Roosevelt community has been pushing for this option since the beginning of this process, and we deserve adequate time to review it prior to any listening sessions. The proposal still does not address growth on the northwest side of town. It is disheartening to know that the committee was meeting with the city to talk about potential land developments the day after the board voted to move forward with the listening sessions. My hope is that we would have known about all land developments for the whole district before a recommendation was even considered. The process continues to conflate the issues, addressing overcrowding at Southside schools for facility expansions and addressing undercapacity at certain Northside schools by closing Roosevelt. These are separate issues and must be addressed separately. Grouping them together has the effect of pitting the interests of North and Southside parents against each other. I do not want Southside students to be in overcrowded schools, but the only other option we have been given is outrageously expensive. Furthermore, if Southside schools are given a listening session about potential expansion or a new school, it's not surprising that you will receive a lot of support from them. Will the listening sessions provide the overview for the whole district or just pieces that apply to individual areas? The proposal disproportionately affects certain areas of Eau Claire but evenly distributes listening sessions. If the board is truly following the timeline of a potential vote in the spring, please consider having Roosevelt listening sessions as soon as possible. In my opinion, it should be one of the first listening sessions provided, as it has the most potential impact on all of our elementary schools. Parents and community members should have adequate time to absorb the information and respond to the board members. One further recommendation regarding the listening sessions for Roosevelt would be to host it at a Northside school. It seemed as though the committee was considering holding it at Roosevelt or Memorial. We have approximately 200 families attending Roosevelt, and would ask that the committee and board consider a location that is closer to our school, such as DeLong Middle School or North High School. The community is relying on these listening sessions to give you our feedback on the proposed options. Our hope is that the listening sessions are filled with information, and I don't think it's unfair for the community to request this. If the school board expects the public to be informed stakeholders in this process and truly offer input, then please be sure to provide us with all of the answers to our questions, as well as to listen to our concerns. Roosevelt parents are active and involved and are willing to help to get creative, to make options that will benefit all of the students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Erin Sturgis.
I'm Erin Sturgis, and I live at 1224 Steffi Road, so now that everybody knows that, I'd appreciate it if you'd drive by and look at our Christmas decorations that my children begged me to put up. Tonight, I come to you as a leader in this community. I, like yourself, serve on boards and I serve on committees, and in my profession, I am a leader. So I'm here to serve as a point of information. First, the district leadership informs the board, and it is our responsibility as a community to inform you as well. And second, because of that, you need to know and understand the concerns of the community, the concerns of parents and the concerns of students, and how recommendations from district leadership in this building have been and are currently being made. I've been watching, I've been listening, and I am a part of a PTA subcommittee group at Roosevelt. And right now, the last eight months, it feels like we are trying to build an airplane that is flying 30,000 feet. I've seen little to no action-based steps to create transparency around a decision that not only affects families and children at Roosevelt, but an entire Northside community, those with children in the school district and those who have no children in the school district. The lack of transparency by district leaders is what has many people in this community questioning their trust in this process. The Demographics and Trends Committee overwhelmingly proposes a new building for Roosevelt, only to have that proposal rescinded, and recommends later that Roosevelt be closed, dispersing the children to other elementary schools, and then adds expanding 4K. But that is not what concerns me. What concerns me is that because of the lack of transparency, because of the turnover on the committee, that recommendation looks like it was based on knee-jerk reactions to past decisions and financial situations that this school district is faced with. There was no conversation with city officials. There was no conversations with county board officials. There was no conversation with the student transit. There was no conversation with 4K sites. And finally, most importantly, there were no conversations with the community as a whole. And so I question the Demographics and Trends Committee. What is the purpose and the need behind the people chosen to be on this committee? What are the norms and assigned duties and responsibilities of each individual on this committee? And I don't feel there's equal representation on this committee, and that is due to lack of transparency. And I'll also take it a step further and question the process. Why were the June minutes of this committee not available until October? Why were there no meetings in the summer, and why was the September meeting canceled? And just a point of information, the October minutes are not yet available because there was no quorum in November, so they could not vote to approve the minutes in October. Why did the board approve listening sessions with the community, presenting the three options, prior to Ms. Kohler meeting with the city officials? And I understand that Roosevelt is just one little piece of this very complicated puzzle that you have been discussing, but a big part, a big part of moving forward is to have the support and to have the trust of this community. I recommend that you, the leaders of our community, moving into the new year, I recommend that you stop, pause, back up, regroup, and bring key stakeholders of this community together. Get back to the strategy that you put into place as a school district, and begin the conversations the right way, a transparent way, because right now-
Thank you, your comments, your time is expired.
All right, thanks. I'm a pastor, so I talk a lot.
That's fine. Okay, that's it for our public forum section, and that brings us then to our reports, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin with the upcoming Board of Education events. On December 4th, there will be a meeting of the Family Advisory Committee at 7:00 PM. There will also be a meeting of the Budget Development Committee, and that will take place at 1:00 PM. Both of those meetings will be held in the Administration Building. On December 13th, there's a meeting of Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee that will take place at 4:30 in the Administration Building. On December 14th, there is a CISA Legislative Breakfast to which all school board members are invited, and that will take place at 8:30 in the CISA 10 Office Building. And then on December 17th, there's a Policy and Governance Committee meeting at 8:45 AM, and that will be followed later in the evening by a regular meeting of the school board at 7:00 PM, and all of those meetings will take place in the Administration Building. Tonight, I want to congratulate the Communications Committee. They have received another Spectrum Award. This is for the Special Purpose Publication Project Pre-K-12 Summer School Program Guide for 2018. The certificate reads, "Congratulations on your 2018 Spectrum Award of Excellence. Your commitment, passion, and dedication to school public relations is evident in your work." And the members of that committee are Patty Iverson, Terry Piper Thompson, Karen Larson, Emily Eckert, Siri Bell, Megan Price, Stan Nesbit, Michelle Radke, James Martin, Jim Schmidt, and Kim Kohler. So congratulations on the job well done. Appreciate it.
I don't have much of a president's report tonight, other than we will have some vacancies that we'll be filling on our committees, so we'll be working to get an application put together, and we'll send that out through our channels and on Skyward, and then we'll make those appointments as a board, either our second meeting in December or the first in January. And also, just to board members, make sure that we all stay for a few minutes so we can schedule our special closed session right after the meeting. So that's it for my report, and we do not have our student representatives tonight, as they both have concerts at their respective high schools, so we wish them well. And then that takes us to our committee reports. So Budget Development Committee, I'm assuming we'll be talking more later tonight, so, okay. LEAP? Okay. Policy and Governance?
We met this morning to review the workflow, so we have identified the issues that we'll be addressing during the month of January.
That's great. And I'll just share briefly with the Revenue Committee, we're continuing our work, and it's been a really engaging group with a lot of broad perspectives and a lot of really good ideas, so we're working on whittling down and prioritizing the areas that we think can be most advantageous and most efficient for the school district to look at implementing. So that takes us then to the legislative update. Do you have a report tonight?
Briefly, to bring to your attention that bills were presented in the last couple days to modify the powers of the Attorney General and Governor recently elected, so we will need to be paying attention to the process, as it may affect education policies.
Thank you. And then that takes us to our consent resolution agenda, so we'll consider all these items together. If you'd like to pull one, just indicate that. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 19th, 2018, the minutes of closed session, November 19th, 2018, the Human Resources and Employment Report, second cash advance on line of credit, and approval of five-year capital selected projects. So I would entertain a motion to approve 6.2 through 6.6.
So moved. Second?
Okay. Because we have the line of credit piece and the capital projects, we'll do a roll call vote on this one.
Commissioner Beekah?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lugan Bell?
Yes.
That takes us then to our individually considered resolutions. We have one on the agenda, which is a resolution supporting the establishment of joint session meetings of tribal nation leaders. I'm recommending that this item be postponed for a later time, and the reason for that is the Policy and Governance Committee will be looking to recommend the adoption of a new policy in the school district, 886 Relations with Tribal Authorities, in late January, largely utilizing the sample policy on books from WASB. So this concept in this resolution is important, but it will be incorporated in that broader policy, so we can avoid being redundant and have a broader conversation. So I would entertain a motion to postpone this resolution indefinitely. So moved. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, that's everyone. And then we will adjourn to committee. Our first committee item for tonight is an update on OPEB, and we have Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, I am going to provide an update from the Budget Development Committee. We had a meeting last week where we spent our entire meeting talking about OPEB, and so the committee has some questions for the board and wants to remind the board some things tonight. So just a reminder of the goals that the Budget Development Committee discussed and kind of utilized when we started talking about OPEB. We've been looking through all the scenarios, and remember the goals were to have a sustainable plan, an equitable plan, and a plan that values retention. It's very important to recognize the length of service that employees have given to the district. The current plan, so you remember, is dependent upon which health insurance plan the employee currently has, and we know that is just not affordable to us now, because it is tied to those health and dental increases which are very unpredictable. Reminder of the timeline that we've been on this journey. So April 18th, I provided the board a first update of what the Budget Development Committee had brought forward for scenarios. On May 7th and May 21st, we had some more updates. From June 11th to July 19th, we had several listening sessions. July 23rd was an update to the board. September, we had another round of listening sessions as well in October, and then we're in December. And so if the board chooses to make a decision, we were looking for July 2019 implementation, and that's why we're here tonight, is just to remind the board, because we want to make sure that we're honoring that timeline that's been set forth. I wanted to remind the board of the potentially eligible staff, and keep in mind that these were employees that were in place when we used our last census data that was sent to the actuaries. It's also the same information that was used in the April 2018 presentation. So you can see that 655 of our employees are still eligible under the current OPEB plan. A few things that we thought it was interesting to compare to, we've done some other comparing to other districts. Board members, you should have a packet of paper with some slides, I believe. If not, I'll make sure that you get them. But we looked at comparing ourselves to top 10 schools, to schools that have UW systems, and schools that are in our local area. And so you can see, when we look at our OPEB costs compared to the top 10 schools, that Eau Claire is the number one on the list. We currently spend $787 per pupil on OPEB. You can see the next closest district to us is Kenosha, and there are 551. The average of the top 10 schools with OPEB trusts is $461, so you can see that is $326 difference from just the top to the average. If we were spending near the average, that would equate to about a $3.6 million savings for us, when we're comparing ourselves to the top 10 schools. If we compare ourselves to schools that have UW systems in their communities-
Sorry, we have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I think Abby's going to get to this, but I'm getting like fast heartbeat, is we never negotiated just benefits or salary, so when we pull out our benefits, people need to realize that through the course of negotiations over all those years, we often took less in pay and more in benefits, so we might look different, given the amount compared to others, because of that journey, and I just wanted to add that information.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Hamburg Boyle. If we look at just the OPEB costs compared to other UW schools, you can see that we are number two behind Menominee. I did reach out to the Menominee school district to see what was different and why they were spending so much more, and they have made changes to their OPEB plan, but they're in the tiered phases of those changes, and so it will be reduced over time, but right now, they're kind of in those tiered buckets of when those changes are happening, and so they haven't felt the full effects of those changes yet. But again, if we look at the average that that group is spending, it's $479 per pupil. In comparison to our $787, that's $308 per pupil less, which is about a $3.4 million savings, if we just spent the average of that group. And if we look at it compared to our local schools, again, we're back at number one, when you look at that, and the average of the schools around us is $288. So when you look at that comparison, it's about $5.6 million if we were spending just at the average. And these costs were just focused on the 2017 year, because that's the most recent year that we can get information for. If we look at historically how OPEB has impacted our budget, you can see that in the 2013-14 year, we spent almost $7 million. In 2014-15, it was just a little bit less, at 6.7, 6.3, 5.9, 5.8, and then this year we had that big jump back up to 6.7. So this year's budget impact for OPEB is $882,000. And so again, this is just that need for that continued conversation, and what, if anything, are we going to do, and are we willing to make some changes to have that budget impact? So it's sustainable and predictable. As Commissioner Hamburg Boyle stated, you know, salaries and benefits were negotiated, and so I did do some comparisons of salaries and benefits, just to see how do we compare with those same groups. So when we look at the comparison of the top 10 districts, you can see the average that the top 10 districts are spending is $9,637. We're actually below that right now, at $9,092. So you can see where the dark line, that's highlighted. And so I'm not sure exactly what their benefit packages look like, but when they break it down per student, right now, we're actually less than the average. When we look at the comparison to the UW schools, we're still less than the average. The average for that group is $9,407, and we're at $9,092. When you look at the local schools, their average is $9,032, and we're $9,092. So in this group of our local schools, you can see we are just a little bit above that average, and we're kind of in the middle of the pack when we're looking at schools nearby us. Then if we just look at the benefits, we had some discussions about where do we rank as far as benefits, and what does that look like? And so from the benefit comparison to the top 10 districts, for all of the benefits, the group average is $2,917. We're at $3,240. Again, if we spent just at the average, it's $323 less, and that's a savings of $3.6 million. If we do that same comparison to UW schools, you can see we're more towards the top at number three. The average that group is spending is $2,875, and our average is $3240. Again, if we spent $365 less, that's just over a $4 million savings. And then if we look at our comparison to our local county schools, that group average is $2,885, which is $355 less than what we're currently spending, which is just over a $4 million savings as well. I thought it might be nice to put it just in one table, so that way then you could see what the top 10 districts were doing, and when you look at the comparison to the UW schools and the local county schools. So there's some big dollars there, and it's not just looking at OPEB, it's looking at all of the benefits we looked at, just in general, what benefits are we offering compared to what are others offering. Then we had a question from Budget Development, is how does the freezes impact us, and what does that look like from the so many years that we were frozen? And so this is just a graph to try to show historically what does that look like and how it's been impacted. So when we look at salary and benefits, and I only compared this to local districts, because if somebody's going to leave us, most likely they're going to go to a surrounding district. They're probably not going to go to Madison, or you know, some of the bigger ones. And so Eau Claire is the red line, and so you can kind of see, we've been kind of steady, we went down a little bit, but the trend line is very similar to what some of the other districts are doing as well. And so I think we know, everybody knows that the freezes impacted, as well as ACT-10, but you can kind of see the trend, our trend line has a lot of similarities to the majority of the districts in our area. If we look at just the benefits- Oops, I'm sorry, I skipped one. If we look at just the salary in history, and what did the freeze look like? Again, you can see not a lot of spread between all of the districts in our local area. We talked a lot at Budget Development about the fact that our salary schedule has a 2% increase built into it every year, and we know we had several years of freezes, but we're wondering if in the future, that you know, we'll be moving our dot up faster than others, because I'm not sure that it's real common for everybody to get a 2% increase. What I understand is that some surrounding districts, they have professional development goals that they have to meet, or other requirements to move through their salary schedule. And here in Eau Claire, you have to have a satisfactory evaluation, and you have to work for us for six months out of the year. So it's very, very easy to get a salary increase in Eau Claire. It might not be that easy in other districts to get that. And I know some of the other districts that we've looked at, their salary plans, they might get a raise once every three years, not every single year, and so I would anticipate that going forward, that our line moves, just based on the structure of our salary schedule. Then if we look at the benefits history, just for the last several years, and you can see our line is kind of all over the place, as most of the districts are as well, but we're near the top in our area, and we saw that with the numbers before. So we just wanted to provide some background, so the board could kind of understand some of the things that we had looked at and had reviewed. So now we really want to talk about the options that Budget Development is hoping to get a good discussion with the board tonight. And so those three options that they want to have discussion on is considering option one, which is Scenario B, that was presented over the summer, as far as an OPEB plan. Another option that we talked about last week was capping health and dental rates at the current rate, and so that way then we're not leaving ourselves open to that unknown, that medical trend each year. And then option three is no changes for the current plan as of July of 2019. So to remind the board a little bit about what we had talked about before, so Scenario B1 was kind of a combination of A and B, and the board had requested that we get that information after they saw the grandfather groups initially. So this Scenario B1 has a grandfather group, for anybody who has met the age and eligibility requirements by June 30, 2023, they would have the same health and dental plans that they have today, but the rates would be frozen at the 18, 19 rates. The earned service benefit, that range brought the bottom up to a 1.0 to a 2.0, so based upon your age and your years of service, we would calculate how much of an earned service benefit we owe you at that point of change, and that would be payable at retirement for the first five years after retirement. And then in Tier 3, there would be an additional defined contribution that would start, and it would vary based upon the employee group that you have, and so again, that would be payable over five years at retirement, and you would need to retire to receive that benefit. It's kind of like the defined contribution that we have for our newer employees, except it's just not going into the account right at that time, it's all paid out at retirement, and so those would be the biggest differences. When we talk about cash flow, and we talked about this at Budget Development, and comparing, when would we see some budget impact of a potential change to OPEB? And so we kind of used a million dollars as our threshold, and so in Scenario B1, the first time we'd hit a million dollars in savings isn't until 2025. So I know that this is a very touchy subject to talk about, and everybody kind of, we've had our fair share of feedback on it, but one of the goals of Budget Development when we started this process was to look for a goal of $1.5 million in savings annually to help impact that bottom line, and you can see in this scenario, we wouldn't even hit a million dollar savings in 2025. So if there isn't any decision to move forward, or just kind of put things on stop, just remember that we're going to keep extending that timeline before we would see any potential budget savings. Option two that we talked about was a capped plan, and basically, these numbers are just for illustration purposes. The actuary didn't have time to get us what the numbers for sure would be, so we did some calculations, and we looked at our census and where people- So we did some calculations and we looked at our census and where people were at based upon the April data that was shared with the board. So we listed the 2017-18 rates because that's what the information was for comparability purposes. We estimated our cash cost of capping those rates to be 96 million. If you look at our current plan today, our estimated cash outlay without any medical trend included in there, it's just over $107 million. So by looking at this 107 to 96, that's about a $10 million savings. If you divide that over 30 years, it's about $353,000 a year. Now, that number could be different because a lot of people don't retire with family health. You know, as people are going out, they're going out with the employee plus health plan. And so because I don't know what that percentage is and what that looks like, I wanted to just use the same census data as where we had and just let the board know that that number could look different. And that's why we would need the actuary to help us with that as well.
So that number could be more?
That number could be more.
Which it probably is.
Yeah, I don't have the ratios.
Right, it's probably more. We don't know how much more, but it probably is.
Right, I would think it should be more.
Thank you.
Let's just say that. This option only meets the predictability goal that Budget Development had because the rates are known and they would not change. It could be viewed as meeting value and retention because the same benefit is still given. It just doesn't meet the sustainability goal because we still have a plan that we can't afford. Also, these numbers do not include employees who are over 65 that do not take our health and dental. And the plans are based upon our current employee census data. And obviously, that's changed since the last time that we measured that. If option one or two is desired, I believe we would meet the timeline that was set forth and presented during past presentations. And we put that up here again just to remind everybody that we were looking for a decision in December of 2018. If no, if the board chooses no, what does that mean? And so we talked a lot about this at Budget Development last week. And no means not today for a July 1 implementation. Budget Development would likely continue researching this topic and looking at a July 1, 2020 implementation. And as I said earlier, I want to remind everybody that the longer we delay a decision, that just you know, has further budget consequences. Because it's going to take at least under Scenario B1, at least till 2025 before we see any budget impact. I don't know for sure how soon we would see a budget impact for the capping. Again, we would need to do some work with the actuaries to have a good number as to when that could change. If no changes for July 1 of 2019, this could be a proposed timeline. And we basically just really fast forwarded it a year, looking at you know, a decision in December of 2018, doing some more research from January to June of 2019, expect a presentation in the summer of 2019, and then a full presentation to the board in October, and then again, a decision in December of 2019. And just to remind everybody, we did those dates purposefully when we set our original timeline because we wanted to give employees the chance to be able to think about if they were eligible and able to retire, if they wanted to make a change. That deadline right now is March 1, I believe, for our certified staff. And so by having that recommended decision in December, that would allow for some time to make a decision. And then the other thing that we wanted to remind everybody is that there's going to be some trade-offs for the no change to current benefits. And if the board doesn't make any changes to the benefits, then what? The board is going to need to make other difficult decisions regarding salary and benefits because of the fact that's 78% of our budget. And these examples I've provided before, would the board want to look at salary freezes, increased class sizes, less staff, employees contributing more to health insurance, increasing the health insurance deductibles? Just because a change is made to OPEB is still not going to solve all of our problems. This is just one step in moving that way. If you remember, we adopted a $3.3 million deficit this year. And so the numbers that we're talking about are maybe a million to a million and a half, but that's even five or six years down the road. And so we need to be cognizant of that. And that was a lot of our conversation with Budget Development is we've been talking about OPEB since 2012 essentially on this particular piece. And nothing's been done and we understand that that's a challenge and that it's very hard to make a change. But do we want to just continue to hold off on that change? And so next steps, again, Budget Development recognizes that making the OPEB changes is one of many steps towards reducing our deficit. And so now I would invite any questions and discussion and provide us some direction for Budget Development so we know what to do next.
Are there board member questions at this time? I guess I'm not sure if with the percentage cap piece, I'm not really sure how I can talk about it without actually knowing what the numbers are.
So do you mean you want to know how it works?
No, I know how it works, but I'm saying if these are for illustration purposes only, I guess I wouldn't. I don't feel all that comfortable personally, maybe others feel differently, but without having a clearer picture. And I don't know how long it would take for the actuary to get us that information.
It's probably about three months out, I would say at this point in time to get it.
To get actual numbers? Commissioner Beekah.
So the idea of the cap was, I believe, a new, first discussed at our very last meeting. So I think what might be helpful for us to hear a little bit more about is even without the specifics, just more of kind of the, is it something that you would want us to pursue? Do you think about this as a possible strategy? Just more from a general perspective than from the specifics. And so as Abby was saying, that this idea came up because the most unpredictable piece is the cost of future health and dental. And the idea from the bond rating agencies. So we consider this as a strategy to deal with that unpredictability. It's a new idea. And so we would like some feedback from you, just even from a general perspective.
I'm going to chime in here too. This was one of the first things that we looked at. And you wouldn't have been on Budget Development at that point in time. And so the reason why it didn't come forward was because it didn't meet that targeted $1.5 million savings per year. And so, but you're right, you wouldn't have seen it before. And we could certainly pull those numbers out because at least that would give some ideas. I don't know what the capped rate was at that point in time, but I certainly could see if we could get that information to you and share it.
Commissioner Hambukboyle.
I can make a comparison back many years ago when the OPEB piece was capped on what you had going out in retirement. So you know, the idea of capping it would have been a discussion, I think, in the sense of knowing what the costs were. And we were more than happy in Budget Development to bring that back up as a discussion to see what people thought about that. It's true that when you look at the big picture relative to our healthcare, we have no control over that. That's very apparent across our country, actually. And especially for public entities that provide health and dental insurance. So it isn't us as a board making those decisions. It's really the relevance of healthcare in our country that is making that decision. So I think if we would sit down and have a debate about this relative to the district and our staff, it would be, we have so much money and how are we going to make this work? And so it was a really healthy discussion in Budget Development about how maybe this would be another way of looking at things in the sense of over time and what this would look like. And also engage people in what that conversation would be with our healthcare period. So everybody has a right to what they believe or think about it, so.
Well, I mean, as a general concept, I think it's fine to discuss it and take it to different employee groups or stakeholders to talk through this as an option. I guess it isn't an option right now. It says option two, but it really isn't an option because we don't really know. So, but I understand that we might want to look at it and explore it. So I mean, that seems fine to me. But I guess one piece that I'm, you know, obviously, one part of the backdrop with this is our ability as a school district to leverage our size, leverage being the third largest employer in the community, the largest government in the Chippewa Valley, $140 million budget, leveraging that in terms of healthcare innovation and looking at other insurance options. But of course, we know we have limitations with that, with our risk ratio being what it is. I know we're working on that and that perhaps in a few years, we might have the ability there. But then that kind of leaves me to question this whole, particularly the OPEB Scenario B1, again, not seeing substantive savings for quite a while. And begging the question, which it was not included in this presentation, but you know, looking at are there other things that we can do as a school district? To me, there are, yes, trade-offs, but also solutions. And the fact that they aren't even on this presentation is a little concerning. And I know that we, so I think that that's something that we need to talk about, I guess. Particularly with the Revenue Committee, I think, which is, which I, being in that meeting, there were a lot of great things that were brought up. Some you might call low hanging fruit that would bring revenue to the school district. We aren't quite sure of what those projections are yet. We're just having that conversation. But I think that's a part of this. I think it has to be. So I would hope that any future, and maybe we need to do a little more communication, and I think we will, between Budget Development and the Revenue Committee once we're a little more fleshed out. Because I think this is just one part of the picture so far. Commissioner Hambukboyle.
President Loganbill, I couldn't agree with you more. I think when you look at the examples, as far as what would our alternatives be, I can't help but thinking of the impact of that revenue conversation as well and what that would mean over time to the school district. So I think that's a hard list to look at. But I think the impact of the Revenue Committee, because I was funded to be there at the meeting this week, or last week, that those things are interconnected in our district and we have to really consider those as well.
Commissioner Beekah.
Sorry. I guess I want to speak to the transparency issue. And I really, I want to thank the speaker during the public forum. I think I had some realizations that I had not considered before. I think please understand that what you see presented here, Abby's role is in the Budget Committee is someone who seeks out and presents information. And so this presentation personally captures what we discussed. And so I wouldn't want anyone who wasn't there to think that, to think that something was intentionally left out or this is kind of what we know. This is what we were able, or I feel what I know and I was able to talk about in each slide that you see reflects information that comes from board members' questions and inquiries during the meeting. And so if there are gaps here, then I think it is a communication issue. And I would suggest perhaps we even consider merging revenue and budget. Because without knowing what the Revenue Committee is talking about, I feel really stymied, I think. This is about what we can produce without knowing more. So it may be not a permanent merger, but perhaps a temporary one.
Well, and I think it raises an important point, which is we, I think that we will need to have those groups sit down together and bring a more full presentation with full options. Because you're right, this isn't, and I certainly, you know what you know as a committee and you're working on the information that you have. But I do think as a full board, to have the fullness of that information. Because I think that when we talk about alternatives to these plans, we talk about trade-offs, yes, there are trade-offs, but there are other options too. We are fleshing those out as we speak. But I think that's an important part of this for sure. I guess as far as the question of, does the board feel ready to, you know, looking at the timeline slide, maybe we could pull that up. Does the board feel ready as far as implementation of some sort of a plan this month? Or is the board feeling more towards having more options before us and then looking at it in 12 months from now to make a decision? Where are board members at? Commissioner Hambukboyle.
I think we need additional information relative to the numbers with the cap. You know, we don't have that yet. So that would make it hard for me to make a decision within a month or even, you know, I think we could be fluid enough as to when that information came. We'd keep moving forward with the discussion. But I would need that information as a board member.
I would, I personally agree that it'd be good to have that. I truly, I mean, I don't want anyone in the audience or watching to be mistaken and thinking that we're not going to have to do something as a school district. We're going to have to make structural changes or additions to our system because the way that it's currently operating is not sustainable. What those changes look like is what we're talking through. But I think that we cannot postpone the inevitable in that sense, you know, in making changes. But I truly feel that we don't have the fullness of the options in front of us quite yet. I wish that we had a school district revenue committee five years ago. I wish that we'd been having this conversation when I got on the school board in 2015. The reality is we were not having it yet. So we are where we are right now. And I think that all we can do is just look at what do we need? What information do we need more of? What solutions do we need to look at? So I guess where I'm at personally is it would make a lot of sense to, to plan that we're going to be voting in a year from now on options. Maybe even sooner though. If, for example, talking about the fullness of the big picture here, if the Revenue Committee comes forward with an opportunity or a program or something that would generate revenue, we can vote on that before December. And perhaps that will help tweak or change what will end up being voted on in that December as a board, depending on what is put forth stomachly. I don't know. None of us do. But I think it would make sense to vote on it in December 2019, to vote on whatever options we'd look at. Because I certainly don't feel like we'd be ready this month. Commissioner Klinkamer.
Thank you. I understand what you're saying about that. And for me, it somewhat seems like what I think we're all feeling, which is we wish there was another situation. We wish there was a magic fix to this. We wish there was something that's going to come out, that's going to solve this problem for the district. And I'm not sure that this doesn't start to look like us just avoiding the decision. And so we're, I think, we can keep getting numbers and we can keep getting actuarial tables and we can get, my understanding is this has been, this discussion has been happening for a long time. And we keep going back for more information. The three options came up and then they were modified to be one. And now we're looking at caps. And my sense is, is it's probably like what I wish, is that there were some magic fix to this. I'm wondering if it isn't time for us to just say, we're going to make a hard decision? I mean, I think we need to say, we're either going to vote on this or we're not. We're either going to make a decision about this or we're going to say, we're not going to vote on OPEB and we are going to look at some of those harder decisions that we have to make. I guess that would be my feeling about it. I don't know that revenue that we bring in, as you said, this just got off the ground. Those things take a long time to develop. I'm not sure that it's going to be next year viable in a way that's going to fix the problem in the way that we need to fix it.
Thank you. Commissioner Vu and Torres.
My feeling is along the same line, that we are dealing with the district budget and OPEC is only And OPEC is only one slice of that budget. So to vote independently on OPEC and not seeing the other piece of pie would be premature. So the work of the OPEC may be almost done. But then there needs to be a time to look at the rest of the piece of the pie before making a dependent decision on OPEC.
Thank you. Commissioner Torres.
I will agree with Commissioner Klinkheimer. I think that if we don't vote for OPEB, following the timeline that we had agreed on, then what's in front of us are the five bullets from the trade-offs slide for the budget for next year. Because I don't think that any revenue that will be, idea for revenue that will be proposed will generate enough to cover those numbers. So we are in front of a difficult situation right now. So how we, how we're going to document that is going to be different. But I think that we're in front of salary freezes, increased class sizes, less staff, employees contributing more to health insurance, and increased health insurance deductibles.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Humbleboyle.
Yeah, I, I hear what our board members are saying. Let me reflect a little bit on that is, I agree, we have to make a decision. If we come back, you know, at our next board meeting and vote no, that would mean that we are going to pull in some more information and look at making that decision down the road. Because we have to make that decision. And that's, that's the no vote that we kind of discussed at Budget Development and what that would mean. The other thing I want to remind everyone is when we looked at the information that Abby so wonderfully put together, was you have to see over time how much the benefit piece was tied to salary. And you could see that very visually in where Eau Claire went, given salaries, because we, they were always taking more in the benefit realm. So as a board member, I have to really deeply understand that in order for us to think about any other option than a cap right now. Because of that journey, okay? And also, when you looked at salary, we weren't up where we were competing with other districts even smaller than us, correct? If I can interpret that? You could see how many, what is there, three or four districts right now ahead of us? You did mention that the 2% increase every year, we don't know what that's going to look like. And you know that we can predict whatever, but we don't at this time. That's our story right there, right? So I just wanted to reiterate that. In the sense of the decision of saying no and getting more information relative to what that cap would look like and what that would look like down the road. Because in my head, that's kind of where I'm leaning. But I know, Lori, you're right, or Commissioner Klinkheimer, we, we need to make a decision. So you know, I'm, I'm willing to, maybe when we bring it back, to make a motion of no until we get more information. Would that, would that be what we would be looking at as a board?
Well, the board would have the opportunity to vote on, to make, to make any motions on the proposals in front of them. I don't know if, what proposals would be in front of us at the next meeting as far as fleshed out.
I think that's our discussion tomorrow at Budget Development, essentially.
Okay. So yeah, that would be the board's, that would be the board's decision to make. I don't think, yeah, as far as voting at the next meeting, it seems like the consensus that board members would like to at least make a decision on where we're going to move with this.
We did talk a little bit too about in the past, we always talked about Eau Claire area school district being a destination district. So you kind of want us to be up towards the top, really, when you're looking, right? I mean, that's kind of what we'd like. So when you, we did local districts, we did UW districts, and we did the top districts. But what I didn't see in there was, there's a top 10. We sit eight. Remember, I always think back to our documentary, what district is seven? It's Waukesha? No. Mano, Mano, Manitowoc? One of those. I mean, I'd like to see where that fits to in all the top 10. Was that hard to find the other two in the top 10? I don't know, I can look that up myself.
So I think what I hear you saying, Commissioner Humbleboyle, is you'd like me to add, well, this does have the top 10 in there when we look at benefits.
But we didn't, we didn't do the salary and benefits with the top. I think there were only eight in the other list. Maybe you did.
I think I did. Top 10.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Okay. Yeah, maybe I looked at an old one. Thanks.
Sure.
You can see where we sit in the top 10. It's not at the top. And I find that interesting, because when we were just looking at benefits, you know, you go, oh my gosh, we need to fix this. When you put salary and benefits together, it gives you a totally different picture.
Thank you. I see any other lights. So we'll plan to put this as an individually considered item. And we could put all different options on the table that we have right now. And you, as a Budget Development Committee, will have to decide which options those are. And if we have the data to have them. Anything else from board members? Okay. All right, then we will move on to our next report. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Actually, I can't move on yet. It's a committee report. So anyone in the audience have a, they can make questions? Okay, don't say anyone. That takes us then to our next report, which is regarding our safety and security protocols update. And we have Ms. Holquist here this evening. Hello.
Well, thank you for letting me come and address you. I'm sorry. Thank you for letting me have the time this evening to address you and just bring you up to speed on where we're at with the school safety grants. Because you might have heard a lot in the news and a lot around the district about what we're doing. So looking at alignment to the strategic plan, we're really looking at student social and emotional growth. You know, are students feeling safe at school? What type of climate are we setting in our schools? Do students feel safe to come forward and see something, say something? Looking at partnerships with families and communities, this is a big target for us and the state with these safety grants. So we're looking to grow those partnerships with, within our community. So 2017 Wisconsin Act 143, the state established this legislation and established an Office of School Safety. So that Office of School Safety is underneath the Department of Justice. And they're tasked with really creating model safety plans and policies for the state of Wisconsin's school districts and private schools. They're also charged with compiling all the blueprints and safety plans for all of the districts. So we've had to, we've had to submit to them all of our floor plans for each of our schools and our safety plans. And they've done that for every private school, public school, tribal school in the state of Wisconsin. So not only have we shared them with the Department of Justice, but we've also shared them with our local law enforcement, which we have in the past anyway. But we did do that again this year. And we'll be doing that each year as we move on. And then they've also been tasked with creating safety training for schools within the state. So part of that Office of School Safety and part of this legislation was $100 million that the state has set aside to improve school safety. So really looking at, the, the funding was to be in compliance with Act 143 and to create those model plans for school safety. Training, sending folks to training, bringing trainers in to improve that. Safety-related upgrades to school buildings, facilities. And then to comply with the requirements to submit those blueprints to law enforcement and the Office of School Safety. School safety plans, they did some, they did some changings or... They require now that every school, not just the district overall plan, but every school must have an individualized safety plan for that school. So we'll be working on those. And they're creating model practices that we can, that we can work off of. They must include guidelines for things like bomb threats, intruders, weather emergencies, all those things that we have already addressed in our district plan. They've put in some things into the law that says that a school district or a private school cannot have the requirement in their safety plan that somebody in the district has to look for administrator approval before calling 911. They have prohibited that, you know, that a district can't prohibit a staff member from coming forward with a threat of school violence. And that also that they, we can't prohibit an employee from reporting suspicious activity at all. The next thing is mandatory reporting of threats of school violence. So you're familiar with the mandatory reporting of suspected child abuse or neglect? This runs along the same lines. So there are mandatory reporting guidelines. We've been through training. All of our staff in our district have already on that. On-site school safety assessments, so once every three years, we are required to do a school safety assessment of each of our schools. We actually have to do all 20 of them now here before the end of the month. So we're, we're fiercely working. We did one today with Dr. O'Reilly at the Long Middle School. Not only looking at are things locked and are things, you know, but looking at things like climate. So what, what type of climate are we setting in that school? Is there student work displayed on the walls? Is there, you know, slogans and things like that, talking about respect policy? Or talking about what's expected behavior in that school? You know, what do we do? What are the expectations of office staff when a visitor comes to, to the building, or when a delivery comes to the building? So all those questions, I think there's over 120 questions that we go through in this, in this activity. And it's really creating a great baseline for us to say, really, where are we? Let's ask some really honest questions about where we are. And how can we improve? And so then as we improve, we'll be able to see, see where those come. And then school violence drills. So each district and, or each school is required to do at least one school violence drill each year. We've already been doing those. That's our intruder drills that we've been doing already. And then there's some reporting, special reporting that we'd be doing to the state on those as well. So school safety grants. So really the funds, that $100 million that the state set aside for school safety, really looking at improving K-12 school safety and to meet, meet those requirements of that Wisconsin Act 143. So round one, the one that was due in June, that we thought was the only grant and ends up that we ended up with two. So really looking at, at creating funds to projects to comply with Act 143, safety training, and then also those safety-related upgrades. That has a one-year timeline, so the funding, the, the funding cycle started in June of 2018 and it wraps up in August of 2019. So all the projects that we're doing on that grant have to be done by 2019. That grant, we are awarded $388,795,000. And I'll go through the projects that we've identified a couple slides down the road. Round two, so after the state got done with all the round one requests, they found out that they had quite a chunk of funds left and said that we want to do more work. So they released a second round of grant funding. This one really focusing on student mental health and the creation of those local collaborative teams. This one has a, the funding cycle started October of 2018 and wraps up at August of 2020. And in this round of grants, the projects that we were awarded was $627,453. So just over a million dollars to do this safety work in our district in the next two years. So grant number one, the school safety initiative. Really, the funds were in two categories. One was primary and one is advanced. And really what the primary funds were slated for was to bring all schools up to a baseline level. So they were looking at things, do all of your classroom doors, can they all lock? Do they all have functional locks? Not that they're the top-of-the-line lock, but do they have a lock and does it work? And are all your entrances locked? So that's really what the primary part of this grant was, was looking at. And then advanced was looking at those things that brings you above and beyond just that baseline safety. There were some things that we had to do as a district or commit to doing to receive this funding. The first one being that we have to provide all staff with a minimum of three hours of training in adverse childhood experiences and trauma-informed care in trauma-sensitive school. Some training that we have already done in our district before this grant. And that would be continuing to do to reach all of our full-time teachers, aides, counselors, and administrators. We have to certify that all entrances to our school are locked during the school day. And then if, at any time during the school day, those entrances would be unlocked, that we have a designated staff member there to visually, visually screen each person that comes through there. We need to have a written visitor protocol. And then we need to coordinate with local law enforcement agencies. Something that we've already been doing for a number of years. It's working very closely with the Eau Claire Police Department. But we needed to get letters of support stating their support of the things that we're doing and the things that we're asking for in the grant. And then also from the Eau Claire Sheriff's Office as well. So the projects in the first round of, of the grant were some replacement and additional security cameras at all of our schools to bring, to bring those up to really working optimal conditions. Controlled access video for secure entries at all of our schools. Additional IT servers, equipment for video storage. So, and that, that portion has already been, they were actually are just transferring all the video to the new servers and new storage systems since this weekend. So our local storage are, so if somebody needs to come and, and take a look at some video, that has improved threefold from where it was. So, and then the archive storage has doubled with this, with this improvement to our server, IT servers and equipment. Classroom door latching devices, they're called SafeLatch. And really what that does, it allows the doors to be locked and closed, but still have free passage, because it keeps the locking mechanism in the door. So in case of emergency, all they have to do is pull that instead of trying to find keys, going on the hallway, locking a door, so the doors are always already locked. School security assessment training, so the things like the assessment that we did today at the Long Middle School. We were able to bring in the Wisconsin School Safety Coordination Association to do training with us on how to do these assessments. So we sent 24 people between the school district and the police department to this training. It was held in late October. So we were able to fund that training through this grant as well. We're looking at digital threat assessment training, because as you know, in this day and age, a lot, all of the threats that we receive or all of the things that, that are suspicious activity really have a digital component or social media component in that. So we need to bring ourselves up to speed on how to really investigate those and really look at what those threats are and how to look at those. So we're looking for a two-day course for... So we're looking for a two-day course for 50 people between the district and the police department and we're targeting sometime this summer for that to happen. So that's grant number one. Grant number two, really focused on school safety intervention teams and mental health training. So really looking at creating that local collaborative team. So what a school safety intervention team is, is that they are a team of counselors, administrator, law enforcement at each of our high schools, McKinley, each of our middle schools, and then each of our elementary SRO regions will have a team. So there'll be nine teams total. And what they do is they really look at, looking at ongoing concerns in their school with certain students, looking at threats, looking at how to assess those threats, how concerning are those threats, then looking at behavior monitoring, and then also intervention. So really looking at getting to those at-risk youth. Also, mental health training, and we'll talk about in a little bit, and then physical security upgrades and innovations. So more prerequisites or things that as a district we needed to commit to, to receive this funding. One is to provide 10% of our full-time teachers and counselors with adolescent mental health training. We have two sessions scheduled for this summer. They're 12 hours apiece and two sessions scheduled for the summer of 2020. And we're in the process of identifying who those folks are in each building that would go through that training. We'll just be establishing those school safety intervention teams, who are working with law enforcement to do that. And then participate and promote the Department of Justice Confidential Reporting Application or tip line when it's developed and deployed. That has not been developed or been talked about yet, but we as a district needed to commit to participating in that when they do, when they do develop that. So the projects that we're looking at for grant number two, creating a secure entrance for South Middle School. Replacement of some deteriorating entry doors, there's 10 doors at North and six doors at South that really need to be replaced so that they can be secured correctly. Exit door alarms at the high schools, so 35 doors at Memorial and three at North to really look at those areas that may be remote and that we don't want students using those entrances throughout the school day. Additional security cameras for all the schools. And really what we did is we sat down between our security manager, myself, and, and IT and really looked at each school and really took a deep look into where our current cameras were, what state they were in, and what are the requests that we get from schools? What do, you know, the facilities guys, what do they want to see? What is our, our security, our security manager want to see? And really what, what are priorities? So looking at the grants, what are priority one? Well, we want to see the perimeter of the building. We want to see parking lots, playgrounds, the entrances, exits, all that. Priority two, really looking at those common areas, so auditoriums, cafeterias, things for gym, gymnasiums. Priority three, replacing some aged systems at some of our schools. And really had to look, had to do a hard look at what we had funding for, what we really needed, and what would give us the best coverage. So we spent some time on that and we've just, we've kind of wrapped up that work and going to start doing some installation now. Improvements to our district or additional, actually additional IT video storage to support those additional cameras here in grant number two. Improvements to the district two-way radio communication system. So really taking a hard look at our two-way radios. Is the system we have appropriate? Is it effective? Can we do better? How could we improve that? TV monitors for secure entrances, some handbooks for our safe, school safety intervention teams, and then that adolescent mental health training. So that wraps up round two of the grants. There are quarterly fiscal and narrative updates to the state, so we're totally keeping on top of that to make sure that they know what they're, what we're doing too. So, any questions?
Thank you very much for this report. Are there any questions from board members? Commissioner Humble Oil?
I just have one, Carrie, is how are, what we've been doing with the grants, how are our families been kept up on what we are doing? It's ours, our families in the district, because I know they're always asking about safety.
I don't know exactly how that's been communicated to families other than just through the media.
Okay.
But...
Okay, go ahead.
So we have had a couple of things in the media that Carrie talked about, but primarily that would come through principal newsletters and/or building communication. The timeline for rollout for some of these things will be different based on which building you're in, just because we can't do all of them at one. So I would anticipate that principals would be sharing that once their building is updated. Although certainly some of the other things that are district-wide, like the trauma-informed care and some of the professional development that we're doing, certainly could be shared district-wide because that is a district-wide effort. So that's great food for thought.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Beacon.
I just, I may have missed this, but for the intervention teams, I know you mentioned counselors on the team, and I wondered about other, the real mental health experts in the district. So would there be, for example, a school psychologist or a school social worker, clinical social worker on every team?
There certainly could be. Those teams, that team members haven't been totally fleshed out at this point. So we've just received the funding and just, we're working on actually putting together the folks are going to go to the training here in another couple of months. So we're really looking at who is going to be on that team.
I guess for, for myself, just thinking about heavily utilizing the school psychologists.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that suggestion. I don't see any other board comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And for all of this great work and good luck with the rest of the walkthroughs at the schools this month.
Thanks.
So, anyone in the audience have a question? Okay, I don't see anyone. Thank you very much. That takes us then to the update on the dual immersion program planning. So we have Ms. Smith and Mr. Oldenburg.
We are here to provide the board an update.
Could you turn your microphone on?
Excuse me. Good evening. We're here to provide the board an update on the dual immersion program. Call that we were in from the board a few meetings ago and provided some progress monitoring. At that point, the board gave us permission to go forward and do some professional development, gave us some requests of our advisory committee. So we're back to provide updates on that progress and then ask the board's input on further direction tonight. So we know that our dual immersion work that we're now close to three years into significantly aligned to the ECASD strategic plan in academic achievement. We know that through research that we've shared in various board meetings and through our work at our committee, identifies the increased mental flexibility that students that participate in dual immersion programs typically display. Children who study second language score higher in verbal and oral standardized exams. Collaborative cultures are certainly present in the work that we've done with partnerships that we've had with various committee members, community members, and then different organizations throughout Oak Claire proper informing us on the work here. And then our partnership with our ECASD staff in the listening sessions that we've had, the work we've done with administrative groups, teaching groups, and our support staff to help form the recommendations that we've provided to the board. We know that social, emotional learning is certainly present in this work by bilingual children. Have an opportunity to remain, to sustain rather, a strong sense of their own identity while developing sensitivity towards other people and cultures in this work. Partnerships with family and community, as we've talked about specifically, El Centro de Conexión has been a significant partner with us. UW-Oakley has provided expertise around the dual immersion work. And then we've set up significant amount of listening sessions as well to make sure that all stakeholders have had an opportunity to provide feedback and ask clarifying questions on the project. And then just a reminder, here's a list, while not inclusive, very robust list of the different folks that have given us input as we've moved along, as the committee's work has moved along over the 30 months now that we've been working on the project. So you can see a list of those folks that we've shared before. And Brienne, now we'll update you on some timeline progress and then some suggestions that the advisory committee has that we'd like to share with the board tonight. And then we'll also move into some of the budget impact and talk a bit about some transportation options as well.
All right, good evening. So this is not a new timeline. We're just reminding you of, this is the timeline that we have stuck with since the beginning of this project where if moving forward next year would be the first year of implementation with students, with kindergarten class of 2019, 2020. So that is the current implementation timeline that is being proposed. Just an update on the progress, this is the fourth time, I believe the fourth time we've come and talked with you about the dual immersion program. In August, you did approve some professional development and curriculum writing, and I just wanted to update you on that. The reason we wanted that approval in August is that had to be written into budgets. So the money that we had that you had approved is in the budgets to be used. This year, the professional development hasn't occurred yet because that would occur with the stakeholders who would be participating in the program. But just wanted you to know that those are part of our budget and the big one would be where we'd register in January for one of the big professional development sessions we would like to participate in. I've been in constant contact with highly regarded professionals in the field when we talk about dual immersion and how would it look, would look in the Oak Claire School District. I've been doing a lot of consultation with DPI as they work heavily with districts around the state and, and specific guidance in, around dual immersion. And so they have set me up with a couple of consultants that have recommended great professional development for us moving forward. Also been in contact, I've talked a lot about the Carla Institute over in the Twin Cities, which is the center for applied research in linguistic, or language acquisition. The person Tara Fortune, she actually delivers that whole week-long professional development, highly regarded in the field. And I've been in contact with her about possibly after participating in that in the future, helping, actually her coming to Oak Claire and guiding us when we're in implementation and coming into the classroom and helping us build our program and make sure we have a program that's done to fidelity. The dual immersion committee has also met twice since we've been here in August and the focus of the committee has been on trying to look at an application process for the dual immersion program in Oak Claire and then on different options for a lottery for the program, which I'm going to go into next. So just a little background in what the committee did when we were trying to determine what the application process would look like. We looked at four different districts and how they have, they have a separate application process for their program. We looked at dual immersion programs in Manasha, Wisconsin, which we visited, Verona. I chose an out-of-state Wisconsin one, so I chose one in California because they have a lot of established dual immersion programs. And then we also looked at Montessori. They are not a dual immersion program, obviously, and they're a charter school, but they are a program in our district that has a separate application process than our standard application process that all of our, that other families would go through if they went to any of our other sites. So the committee got to, we, they looked at all these different application processes. They highlighted common practices and looked for themes. And then they looked at what would really benefit, what do they feel would be the best process? So every family member who's enrolling in kindergarten could really make an educated decision because we really want families to be committed to this program. So we really feel like they need to have a great understanding of, of what they're signing up for. So I'm going to talk through these steps. So these are the, this is the application process that the committee is recommending moving forward. It is a quite lengthy process, but again, this is a commitment from a family for six years of their child's education, the foundation, when we talk about literacy skills. So we really want to make sure they understand what a dual immersion program is. So step one would be to attend a mandatory family informational meeting. So this would be a meeting where we had explained the research behind dual immersion, the pros and cons of a dual immersion program, comparing what their child's daily schedule would look like in a dual immersion program versus if their child was in our core program, what instruction would look like, what language it's delivered in, so they could really make an informed decision before submitting the actual application. The next step would be where we submitted application. I want to put a note, this would be like any other family does. We're not asking for additional questions. Every family enrolls centrally. We would still use all those questions. Our application gathers all the demographic data we need. The state of Wisconsin has a new home language survey under ESSA, which gathers all the language background information we need. So we're not asking families to do anything additional besides our central enrollment when we talk about the gathering demographic and language background from our families. Step three is where we start to kind of separate ourselves. Because this is a program where we do need to have representation from both languages in the classroom, it's important that we really have clarification of the language background of each student and we make sure they get entered in the proper lottery. Because we'll have a lottery for our native English speakers and we'll have a lottery for our native Spanish speakers. So this could be, it's, it's a contact, it's either a phone contact or a face-to-face, depending on the information we gather from the, the application. There could be some assessing at this time. The assessing tends to come more along the lines of native Spanish speakers and it's more of assessing their oral language skills and their listening skills in their first language. Step four would be selection of students via the lottery, which I'll show you lottery options later. The thing that's important to know as step four is we will have two lotteries. There'll be a lottery for our native English speakers and our lottery for our native Spanish speakers because this program, we need to have a balance in the classroom so everyone has a language model. Step five would be family notification and commitment. And then step six would be apparent orientation and training. Step six is important just because successful programs have a strong parent group. How do you support your child when they're doing work at home in a language you don't understand? There needs to be parent training in that, so that's a key component. So we thought that was important when we were sharing the application process, that parents really felt like they were going to be supported when their child was in this Real quick, just because at a couple of board meetings, people have asked about comparing this to like what, what happens at Montessori. Montessori gathers demographic information as well, parent-student information. They do have a couple additional questions on their application. The committee felt like we did not need to ask any additional questions for our application process. So this is just for a comparison to the Montessori process. So what you're going to see next is three different options when we talk about the lottery process. Step one is the same in every option and the purpose of step one is to keep family units together. So siblings is a priority. Obviously, the first year, that would not be an option, but then moving forward, younger siblings of currently enrolled students in dual language immersion would be the number one priority in all of the options up there. I'm going to talk about the difference between option one and option two right now. So you'll see in option one, students that reside within the Oak Claire School District boundaries, would, it would be open to every student in, within our boundaries. Option two narrows, it narrows it to the step of students that reside within that school of residence. So whatever location was determined, those students would get priority in option two. Option three would open it up to students that reside outside the boundaries. And then you'll see in option two, it goes, we just added that one step. So option three is students that reside within- So option three is students that reside within our boundaries and then step four goes to students that reside out of our boundaries. A couple of reasons why we added the students that reside within the school of residence is a cup of quite a few larger districts offer, their dual immersion is only offered to students who live in that school of residence. So when we looked at other programs, that was how their lottery is set up. So we felt like we should offer that option for you as a board. And obviously would transportation costs might be impacted by that if your students within a school of residence are a priority. Option three is going to look a little bit different. I'm just going to give you a little bit of background of why. There are some different, there's option number two in there. That is an option, that is one of the steps in the lottery process at Montessori. So the committee felt like we should have that as well as an option for the lottery process for the school board for the dual immersion program. We've been advised that option three probably would not be the route to go. As it could create public controversy by showing your kind of putting precedence to children of staff over children within the the school district. So that was advised to us, but we wanted to leave it out there for the school board to kind of determine which one would be the best fit. You obviously could mesh some of these together and make an option four or five, but these were the three. When the committee looked at all the different options and what different school districts did, we kind of settled on these three options.
All right, we'd like to talk a little bit about transportation, location, and then some of the budget portion here for the next part of this presentation. So regarding transportation, so every student entered into the program that lives in the ECASD boundaries would be provided transportation if requested, if needed, as you do with students in traditional programming. Locust Lane sits at the end of bus routes. So working with Student Transit, they identified that Locust Lane would be a more cost, there'd be more cost providing transportation. Because there's not additional routes that you can piggyback on or that you can borrow some of the seats on, so to speak. So there is limited flexibility with with transportation options with Locust Lane. So in effect, you'd be buying additional routes at Locust Lane. And then we'll show you some of the financial breakdown when we get to the budget slide. Longfellow, there's a little bit more flexibility because of its more central location. And there's some seats that are available, some flexibility in the Montessori, Crestview and Messiah bus routes for both the morning and the afternoon piece. But regardless of what you would choose to do. If we, if these transportation options are where we land, as you scaffold from twenty-four to one hundred and forty-four students in full implementation. We do have an assurance from Student Transit that we can still meet the district's standards of less than one hour of travel time for a student on the bus. And less than a one-mile walk to a bus stop. So that would reflect what the current realities are for for busing. Regarding locate, location, we have two locations that we're asking the board to consider. As we have mentioned in previous reports to the board. Longfellow, Longfellow gives us a central location, aligns with Demo and Trends boundary work and current bus routes. There is seats and space available at Longfellow now to be able to host the program K through five. If that is the matriculation of the program. Building principal's background in English as a second language and is a member of the Dual Immersion Committee. And then there's an after-school program that is already in place. That would be a tool to help leverage parents that may need care after school or use that as a bridge to providing private transportation. Locust Lane, also an option, has building capacity. So you could also host the six different levels of dual immersion that that would be needed as you bring the program to fruition. And the building principal has been part of, significant part of the committee work. So those are the two options that the committee is advancing to the board to consider. And then we get into the budget portion of the presentation for tonight. So these are draft numbers. But I think a reasonable estimation, I think we put the ball on the fairway, so to speak, with these estimations. So we feel confident in the numbers that were presented tonight. That the Spanish immersion program launched at Longfellow, you can see that the cost, district-funded cost in materials of ninety-eight hundred dollars. Title III, those dollars would remain the same regardless of what the location is, same with the bilingual, bi-cultural grant. Transportation, you've got a flexible window there of between eighteen and seventy-three thousand dollars. Again, the high estimate would be a combination of using current routes and having to add additional routes. Based on how much transportation that we would offer parents, if it would be transportation that is door-to-door. Or if we do use some regional drop-off sites. For example, a drop-off at Montessori and then students transfer a bus and then have that transportation to Longfellow as an example. So the estimation is flexible anywhere between eighteen thousand and seventy-three thousand dollars. And then you can see the potential cost for a Spanish BEA to be added to the Longfellow staff if that's where we would land the program. So then you can see the budget estimates at the bottom. And it's important to keep in mind that those are annual, so those would stack upon themselves as you roll the program out. So you could reasonably guess that a six-year commitment at Longfellow would give you a budget impact, at least as today's dollars, of between two hundred and six hundred thousand dollars. On the Locust Lane, so you can see a lot of the costs are fixed in the material portion. Transportation gets to be interesting at Locust Lane because of the flexibility that we talked about, or the lack of flexibility at Locust Lane. So we need to purchase some additional routes. Locust Lane certainly viable location, but transportation does become more expensive. So you see scaffolding up, it started with ninety-one thousand nine hundred and twenty was the quote that we were given from Student Transit to provide the first year of transportation. And that would scaffold up to a cost of approximately a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars a year as we continue to add transportation. So a six-year commitment, a better way to say it is a six-year commitment, you'd be looking at between seven hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As you would stack the transportation costs and you have a fully K through five program. So that would be the 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 high end of the transportation commitment. For Locust Lane, you can see the BA costs, the same as that we quoted for Longfellow. And then you can see the overall cost of ownership there for the program if it would land at the the Long, at the Locust Lane. Excuse me. So next steps. So there's several items that we would need the board's direction on the next time we together, together on the seventeenth. We would need the board to approve the application process as Brianna illustrated. We have quite a few things to do. And if we were going to begin programming in the fall of twenty nineteen, registration time and time to send out letters to prospective parents, that time is coming short. So as we see here, you have the mandatory family meeting, submit the application and things that that Brianna illustrated. That need to be decided on, we would hope that the board would decide on December seventeenth. And then you can see some other next step items here. The board would need to also help us on the lottery approval process. Supporting either one, two, or three, or a combination of the three. Or giving us some direction about options that maybe aren't illustrated here, that would be of interest to the board. Additional next steps that we're asking for some advice on is a site selection, Locust Lane or Longfellow. Unless the board would want us to, at this date, entertain a different location that would, I would suggest, delay the process. As of this point, these are the two location sites that the committee is recommending. And then board approval of the budget. So location determined, determined first, and then the budget allocation would follow that. And then you can reference slides twelve and thirteen for the for the best budget estimates that we have as of tonight. Questions? Statements?
Thank you.
Points of clarity?
Thank you very much. Any board members have anything they'd like to? I I guess I I'm wondering, just logistically, is it the same same number of classrooms available at both Longfellow and Locust Lane?
Correct. As of this point, we would be able to fully offer K through five at each building.
I don't see the other light, so I'll, I'll, I'll ask another one. I have just a couple, but others, please jump in. One is just, if you could maybe provide a little, I'm sure that you've spoken with perhaps Ms. Kohler or members of Demo Trends. Or talk to them maybe potentially about how this may impact the board's upcoming decision and work regarding boundaries at the elementary level. I'm wondering if you could maybe speak to that, how this, how this sits in that big picture.
Commissioner, you first?
I can do that first. I thought we were going to rock, paper, scissors. This has been a discussion at Demographics and Trends and what, how this would impact possibly proposed boundary solutions for balancing the enrollment. So ideally, it it would be great for that committee to know if, when, and where this were going to happen. Because we could then look at any adjustments that we would need to make based on projected enrollments.
Did the, did that committee have suggestions or or opinions regarding this program or where it should be or?
We also have spoken with Jim Fyke Student Transit about transportation costs. And the piggybacking on some of the other routes is definitely the one that interests that committee.
Thanks. Commissioner Humble.
Yeah, I I would just have like to have your indulgence because I I think this is, would be wonderful for our school district. And my comments now have nothing to do with the, with that this would not be wonderful for our district. And I'm all in favor of it like hundred and two hundred percent. But I want to put it into a big picture of where my brain is about a lot of this stuff sitting on budget development. And I just have to do this so that people have the big picture. So we have many things in the hopper right now that impact our budget with very little to go on whether funding for our Wisconsin public schools be fixed anytime soon. And we say that often in budget development. It's not fixed yet, even though there might be some hope on the horizon. When as a board member, I'm expected to decide whether or not that we extend our mentor program for forty-four thousand dollars and band instruments for fifty thousand dollars as we've had to make those decisions here. I have a hard time looking forward to spending twenty-eight thousand to one hundred and twenty-four thousand. At the top, one hundred and forty-three thousand on Spanish immersion, when we have other projects out there as well that have been brought before the board that are just kind of hanging out there. The Little Red Nature Campus, which was submitted by our community, Ozones, which were submitted by our very own staff. A virtual school that I really haven't heard the specifics or the costs on yet. I'm sure I'm missing a few things that I need to add to that list. There's now a middle school study going on as well. Why and what are we learning from this study? Will the question of engagement point to more project-based learning? There's Roosevelt and there's South with renovations. There's OPEB, what we talked about tonight. As a board member, I need that information to make good decisions. There's just, I mean, my head is just swimming with all of this. Transportation, we talked about for Spanish immersion. We still don't provide transportation for our four-year-olds at Montessori. And that's been brought up for years and I don't know if we need to bring that back and find out that we can never do that or where does that sit as well? That 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 transportation for Montessori, I think it impacts their diversity because they don't have that piece. I think that's been brought up before. That's sitting out there. So I feel as a board, we need to go back to our strategic plan and prioritize what we want to do going forward. That's been said twice tonight about the big picture. Where do all these fit? What are we going to focus on? Are we going to put a list together? Are we going to prioritize? We need our community, staff, leadership, business partners around the table to strategize this forward. I feel like we're making a lot of decisions in isolation. Our strategic plan, which is a good one, is ready for some revisiting, probably putting it out there as to what that, what do we want to do? I find it difficult to have these conversations about increasing program and silos without placing an intuitive big picture in the future of the district as a whole and what that would look like. I think this could be one of our most exciting conversations we've had as a district. This is good stuff that we're talking about here. And, you know, and where does it fit within the strategic plan we initiated several years ago? So I think this impacts the five hundred kids that are enrolled out. It impacts, as Joe said, revenue. It impacts teaching and learning. And we're just kind of, you know, and then we come to the board and we have to make these decisions. And I just feel like a really good couple of work sessions to get this stuff really out there and focused on and to do some priorities would be really helpful for me as a board member.
Thank you.
Can I respond just real quickly? I'm glad I'm not in your seat because I know there are, there is a lot that's coming to the table. But I, a reminder when we put these next steps up there, that if we want this program to move forward and move forward and run with fidelity, it is a time-sensitive decision. If we want to stick with the timeline, as families go out to all current, letters go to all current 4K families at first week in January. So if there's more information you need from us to help make that priority list, we could give it. But I feel if we keep pushing this back, we are going to have to adjust our implementation timeline, just knowing that. Because there there's a lot that has to get done in that window, so that is kind of why we are asking for the December seventeenth. The other thing we haven't touched on is revenue. If you remember, we would want a balanced classroom of English-speaking students and native Spanish-speaking students. That would mean we would want twelve native Spanish-speaking students in this program each year. I do believe that would bring a revenue stream into our district when I look at our current Spanish population that is within our district. And then many of the families that came to the listening session are Altuna, that are not in our district, that we're highly interested in and putting their children in this program. So I do think that is something we can't give you a number on because we don't know if they're going to come. But there is that possibility of bringing money into the district with this program. And the other thing I really want to talk about is when you look at the state of Wisconsin and you look at dual immersion programs, there is not one in this region of the state. So when you think about like a destination district of what's going to pull families to the O'Clare School District and as a community. Why would I want to take a job in the O'Clare community? They have a dual immersion program. Wassa doesn't have one. Lacrosse doesn't have one. So thinking about what would build our community, also when you're kind of thinking about priorities, that really stands out to me. When I think about what would set our district apart from other districts.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments from board members? Commissioner Becca?
So when I think about immersion programs, I I understand, I understand the research and I understand how they benefit all children. I think primarily about how they benefit students, our students, how we can better serve students who are bilingual or multicultural, multilingual. And so my concern is really with the application process. You described it as a lengthy process. And I have to ask, when you look at those steps, what kind of barriers are we creating for families? And so I would like to think about. We can't really separate language from race, ethnicity, and from socioeconomic status or class. And so there are pieces of this process that I don't think are realistic for families. And especially for the families that I would like to see take part in this program. And I, again, I can't separate all of those identities, but I'm thinking largely about class-based barriers. And so if you have a family, families can be very mobile. They're not going to be able to go to a mandatory family informational meeting because they don't even live here yet, you know? They're not going to be able to necessarily attend the parent orientation and training. We want to be nimble. We want a family to arrive and be able to place their We want a family to arrive and be able to place their child into this program immediately. And I think about, again, I think mostly about bilingual or multilingual families that I understand it's a six-year program and so the commitment, you know, the commitment has to be there. But I think for those families, I will go so far as to say the commitment is going to be guaranteed. And so I really want to kind of deconstruct this process again to make it a much more nimble one and recognizing, especially for recent immigrants, which is a population I really want to see plug into this program. And so how can we break down the barriers that I think potentially could be there?
I'll respond to that a little. My main role for the school district is the EL cornliner, so the English learner coordinator. So my primary population and families that I meet with on a consistent basement are new to this country. They have very limited English, if any. And I can tell you, when we hold functions, they come because we reduce those barriers. We're offered daycare. We offer food. We offer it in the morning. We offer it at lunch. We offer it in the evening. I do think it's a really important step of the process because you have to know what you're getting into because it's a six-year commitment. And I really want families to know the difference between our core program and the dual immersion program. So I do think we need to be aware of the barriers, but also ask then, how can we remove them? I don't think we should lessen a requirement instead of trying to make it so we can meet the needs of all those families. You know, we had a great turnout for our listening sessions. We did have to do a lot of legwork communicating with families. But I do believe that that is an important part of this process. And the parent orientation and training, I think this is going to be a school that's not maybe their neighborhood school. And a key piece of that too is making our families feel welcome in the school that their children will be at. And when you look at cultural responsive practices, the more we can get those families in our schools, the more comfortable they're going to feel. So I do think, again, with parent orientation and training, I know that those are times we're asking families to commit. But with most of our immigrant families, education is of high value and that's why they came to this country. And they will make it a priority and we will try to remove those barriers.
Thank you. Commissioner Torres?
Just to-
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a response to that?
I have a follow-up question, I guess.
Okay. Commissioner Beekah, then Commissioner Torres.
It's okay. I think there's a, I, the value, I don't dispute what you spoke about, the value for education, but I think there is a difference between what immersion programs can sometimes trigger for people is stigma. And so it's one thing to plug into a universal program. It's another thing to opt for an immersion program that might make your child stand out as different. And so I'm sure I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know, but that's why I see the barriers here and barriers around stigma.
Can I ask a question? Brianna, in your research of the four districts and their application process, you replicated this application process after that. Did those districts speak to the issue of barriers at all?
None of, we didn't ask that specific question. We could. But this was a step, the mandatory family meeting was actually one that the committee felt very strongly about, and same with the parent piece. We could reach out to those districts and ask how they, you know, helped remove those barriers or if they have had issues with that, but we didn't ask those specific questions.
And I want, just to add, Dr. Beekah, I wonder if the charge of the leadership of this program would be the reasonable accommodation. So a family meeting can be held in lots of different iterations in lots of different locations so we can bring the appropriate information to our stakeholders. As I think we demonstrated in our listening sessions, by holding various times, various locations, having a listening session that was completely done in Spanish, using Brianna's connections with El Centro to make sure that we use the communication avenues that were available. So that would be a reasonable charge to give to the Dual Immersion Committee leadership to do and absolutely your concerns about access and barriers. And pathways are a valid one. That's salient to the work of the committee as well. So I think we're of like-minded on that, understanding that there's some things that we have to, that the research of Brianna has brought to us has illustrated probably some best practice in there. So it's how do we deliver that best practice to all the stakeholders? And that's our charge to do.
Commissioner Torres?
Just to respond to Dr. Beekah's concern about class during the process of presentation and listening sessions, not only materials have been presented in Spanish by Spanish speakers, but also there were at least three different individuals who were part of, are part of El Centro, which is a grassroots organization that have provided leadership in the process, but also are facilitating straight communication with their base so that any miscommunication or false expectation are eliminated in terms of class coding or decoding. So I think that that has been taken care of.
Thank you. I would say, I think it's, I think it's very wise to be asking these questions specifically, particularly because our one other school in the district, one other program where we have a lottery, is so disproportionate in terms of, and it's gravely disproportionate. And we've talked about that as a board. And so, I mean, I think that if that question hasn't been asked of the districts that do have these regarding the barriers, regarding best practices, I think that that would be wise to bring for our board for the December 17th meeting. And because I think that's one of those dotting our i's, crossing our t's, we need to make sure that we're covering that. And I think that we should be really careful as we talk about, talk about this because I certainly don't think the current lottery system we have in place was done in the best way it could be. And we need to learn from that. And so I guess one question I have is just logistically with the, I know you wanted the transportation piece to be approved in March. Is that still what, and that, when you had come to us, what, the summer or whatever, it was, I think, March, and I could be wrong, but is that still your plan then? Is that you would want us to do that in March as a board?
Correct. You would hopefully give us direction on a location. Then we would work with student transit to be more precise and exact because now we're moving towards routes and what the routes look like and what the sharing of current resources are. And then we'd be able to squeeze that number down to be more exact as we also populate the student enrollment too. So a thing to keep in mind is where the students currently reside will be a significant indicator on what transportation cost is going to be. Students that are in outlined areas in the district, that's more of a lift to transport them to Locust Lane or Longfellow. So as we get more of an idea of who the student body is, you're able to also be more specific in the transportation cost. But yes, March would certainly be still pliable.
So I'm, so I'm wondering then, because the transportation is obviously the biggest part of the budget, I know the budget you have up for us to vote on this next meeting. I'm wondering if it's, if it makes more sense to vote on the budget as part of the transportation? Because if we haven't clustered it out at the next meeting, and we wouldn't until we choose a location, not knowing the full budget? I'm just wondering if that's one piece that we maybe shift to be for that meeting?
You certainly can do that. We do need a commitment from the board that transportation is something the board can fund, understanding that until we know who the students are that are going to occupy the initial group of students in the kindergarten and where they reside, that will really help us lock down what the cost is. We've got some pretty good ideas right now, but we'll be able to move more tightly towards that as we know simply who the students are that are going to enroll in the program.
So I, okay. So I guess, and other board members, please weigh in if you have ideas on this. I guess I'm thinking it would make the most sense to vote on the proposal itself, the logistics of it, the, this piece specifically at the next meeting? And then, and then having the budgetary, the transportation be in March? And I think that'll give more time and also provide more time for the board to discuss what we talked about at the beginning, to talk about where this sits with all the other decisions to make.
Yeah, that'd be reasonable.
I don't know how the board members feel about that. But the other piece that I think would be important is if, if we're going to approve an application process, to have some information about each of these six steps as to the, and I'm sure you have this, but just include areas of accommodation and access that are out, that would be outlined in each step.
Yeah, we should work on that.
Can-
Commissioner Humbleboil.
And is, what's the cost as far as FTE for the teacher? I mean, because that's not included here.
There wouldn't be a cost for it. There wouldn't be an additional cost for the teacher because you're going to have to provide a kindergarten teacher for those students.
Got it.
You would have to-
The BEA is the one-
Right, the BEA would be the additional cost.
And that's usually how they do it. It's not a bilingual kindergarten teacher. It's the BEA. Can you explain that? Because that's-
Yeah. So most successful programs in at least the lower levels, K-1, have a bilingually certified teacher. And then they also have a bilingual assistant in there for the whole day in the classroom just for the lower grades. And then that support, it's kind of like scaffolding, the support of the bilingual aid is gradually pulled away.
So do we presently have a bilingual kindergarten teacher in our district?
We do have a couple bilingual certified teachers in our district, yes.
I think that raises a good point. And I think that the, it perhaps gets deeper, I mean, it does get deeper than this, than this proposal, but looking at building capacity and diversity within our staff and having a more equitable school district and being something that, I know we talk about, we want to have a more diverse staff that we have here and maybe having in the job descriptions, perhaps at the elementary level or elsewhere, bilingual certification as something that we desire in our candidates specifically because I think that that's another way to go, to go about these kinds of things. I guess one, one other piece that I'll add, and that's it for me, just the, and I didn't, I think what's really important for this, for this project and its sustainability, if we were to move forward with it, is one, it's as equitable of a framework as we can make it for our program. And two, that we have a commitment as a district to maintaining fidelity to the program. I think if either of those areas would, would slip in some way or we would have some holes, I think then we would be doing a disservice to all the people who've planned this and to the, to the great potential that programs like this have. So are any other board members wanting to weigh in? Yeah, Commissioner Beekah?
I just have a budget-related question. And I think it is with the Montessori as a model. Would it be accurate or inaccurate to say that when Montessori was able to enroll from the Chippewa Valley, it was a revenue generator, but it no longer is because it's limited to students who already live in the district? This being a much smaller program, could we not predict that that would take the same, we're not going to be able to bring students in from outside and generate revenue because it's too small of a program, priority is given to in district, and so it won't bring in, it will not bring in? And that's why I'd like clarification on that.
Yeah. I would think if we, if we do not have the capacity to take in with open enrollment and it would, it would fill up, as you say, I would think that the, the only potential for revenue would be people literally moving into Eau Claire as a, as a district to live in as a result of the program. I would think that would be the only, I'm not sure, or adding sections. Or adding, of course, adding sections up the front, yeah. Anyone else want to speak to that?
I just want to touch on one thing you talked about with the application process pushing, like the transportation piece till March. Just want, just because I'm speaking for the committee here, they felt very strongly about, before having a mandatory family informational meeting, as Commissioner Beekah talked about, we're asking for families to commit their time, not to create some distrust with them and invite them to a meeting and educate them about this great program and have them go through this process and go through a lottery so we can determine our financial impact and then say, sorry, this isn't going to happen. So just when, when we think about those things, that we're, if we approve the application, these steps have to start, those mandatory family informational meetings would have to start in January and February because you would have your lottery in the spring and you would inform families. So just knowing, we can do that. We're going to be very upfront with families that they're making this kind of time commitment and the program is not fully approved because if transportation obviously is not approved, the program will not. So just knowing that upfront, if we push things back, I'm fine with that. But knowing that the committee also felt that could create some distrust with some families by doing something like that.
Well, I, and I, and I, my bringing that up though, was, isn't a change from the plan.
Yeah.
Because when it was presented to us in August, it did say March would be for that. So I believe that was the plan already.
Yeah. And we, yeah, originally, and we adjusted that after a couple of committee meetings we had and that was, they felt having that, those mandatory meetings and not having, kind of pulling something out from underneath someone wouldn't be a good feeling. So that's why-
Commissioner Humbleboil?
I have a great angst right now, but I, I don't feel comfortable going forward without transportation, knowing that we can afford transportation. I think it'd be totally out of order to have people enroll and get their hopes up and then we don't have money for transportation. Or we have opted for other priorities, given what our budget is. I, I find that this is just, our budget's just too nebulous right now. It's, it's hard for me to, I mean, that would be hard for me as a family to do that, right? Am I a little?
Could we put up the timeline slide? Commissioner Vood, do you have something to say?
Yeah. If I don't say it, I don't feel right either. I'm a lot more like what Commissioner Humbleboi was done saying. I don't want a program that is into the work and it's going well, but yet we are not able to sustain. I can see two examples of that. PAC, O-PAC. We're trying to solve O-PAC. That decision were made by previous board decades ago. I'm sure at that time it was the right thing to do, but did they come up with all the ideas on how to sustain such program? And then recently, we talked about Attic Zone. Beautiful program, but what more are we doing to support that? We can't because budget issue. So a part of me want to align what we do now, the initiative has to be, has to be accommodating the strategic plan. And if you look at the priority that we identify, almost three out of the four, three out of the four idea match, they do align. But, but I think we are falling short of seeing all the different priority this year to 2018 to maybe 2015. Which of the priority we will support and which one we will let go or which one to consolidate? I, I haven't seen that. And I don't think it's the right thing to be, keep on voting individually on small piece and let the future commissioner to be stuck with the decision on how to fix problem, immediate problem. I, I just don't know that we have enough budgetary implication, in other words, planning on how to sustain. Like another example would be Roosevelt. Yeah, we have a problem, but we don't have a concrete solution that- Yeah, we have a problem, but we don't have a concrete solution that, um, at least will be the, in the, in the medium, in the middle. So, I, I'm not quite sure that we are doing justice by keeping voting individually and not looking at the implication of what we decide today.
Commissioner Torres?
I think that in the context of, um, ESA reporting for the end of the year, uh, this project will give us the opportunity to, uh, very specifically indicate, uh, what we have been able to do to improve, uh, the achievement level of English language learners. That's one, that is going to be one of the indicators of that mandatory reporting, uh, in the context of ESA and I think it's strategically a good investment for us to engage.
Thank you. Commissioner Humbleboil?
Um, Commissioner Torres, do you think, um, it would be beneficial, as I listened to that nugget there, to have a work session with the board on, um, the gaps because they're, and, and some of what was in our strategic plan to close those and then really focus on those priority and, and, and see what that looks like, the big picture of what that looks like and all the things that are out there to address that, then we could kind of prioritize as a board what that looks like and where, and what our budget looks like and what we can maybe match and do as a board.
I think that is a good idea. Um, I think that's the way to go, to be very specific as to what we do to address what we perceive as being our weaknesses in terms of academic achievement. Uh, and yet at the same time, uh, I'm confident that this particular project will be beneficial to the final outcome, which is, um, helping English language learners.
And I, I agree with you and I think, um, we look at English language learners and we look at kids with special needs and we look at kids of, um, you know, the other gaps that we're looking at and how the legis, how, what we're looking at to focus on and prioritize impacts each other. I think that dynamic is important for us to understand in our decision-making.
So, I'm hearing that, um, I guess I'm, I want a little bit of guidance from the board as far as do board members feel ready to put this up as an individually considered item, which is what they're asking for at the next meeting? That, what they're asking for is that we will do an up or down vote on these areas, um, December 17th, not including fiscal or transportation, but the other pieces. Are board members feeling, uh, ready to do that or what's your pleasure?
Is it possible to have, um, integrate all the initiative that we talked about? I know we did well with, um, building and maintenance. We plan, we, first of all, we look into the kind of need that, um, building and grounds would incur or would need to be improved and we are able to see ahead of time, five to 10 years. And then we are able to say, okay, uh, we can't fix everything, but let's allocate $2 million a year and try to tackle what is needed first. Can we have a picture like that? At least we get to see the picture and then vote as a package. Is it possible to do that?
I think that that's a, um, really good idea and we talk about thinking strategically, but we don't always connect it just to concrete programs. Um, I wonder if, uh, I mean, what you're talking about is like having a five-year capital improvement plan, but with educational programs or other, is that what you're talking about? Some sort of a phased-
Correct, but, but, but the, uh, the, the guiding principle would be use the strategic plan priority as a guide so that we know how to allocate resource according to what we identify as priority. Cause we know that we don't have enough money to go around, but then we also know that we did a lot of work to identify what's important for the district.
Right. Well, I know, I, I'll use one, I'll use an example of what the city has, which is a work plan, which I think is very similar to what you're talking about. I wonder if that might be worth looking at? I think, I think it could be. Because you're right, we're, we're having to make a lot of decisions in, in, in silos right now and it's very difficult for board members and administrators and everyone, I think. Commissioner Humbleboil?
I think that it's extremely difficult when you think about the, um, in and off of the board and to keep the, the, um, information or, um, what we need to do, um, up front and center, it's hard because, um, we, we don't spend that, remember, we wanted to, we wanted to set up our board meetings where we had one formal meeting and one work session a month so we could keep that information flowing and that's been really difficult to do, nobody's, it's nobody's fault, it's just been very difficult to keep, keep that going because of everything else that's been going on, so.
Other board members, Commissioner Clint Hammer?
Um, just so I'm understanding, my, my understanding of this is that the achievement gaps are a priority for the board and, and that's been the case, that's been identified as a priority. And the program that's been developed over a long period of time here by, by our staff directly relates to that achievement gap. It, the, the design of this is to address that issue. And so, when we think about all the things that we have to do as a district, there's just, to me, there's no way to have some sort of big picture that we're always going to be carrying around because it's going to be fluid, it's going to be changing, it's, it's always going to be changing, whether it's the makeup of this board or the makeup of our community or the makeup of our student population, our staff, whatever you want to say. When, when we have identified a gap or a, a, an issue that we want and people have put this much time into developing a solution to it, it may not be perfect, but I believe we owe them a vote.
So, um, I know, we know Commissioner Clint Hammer is leaning towards bringing this to a vote at the next meeting. Um, other board members have thoughts on that? Commissioner Humbleboil?
We've had other things come to the board though, that we didn't bring to a vote, which maybe need to be discussed in, in a work session so that we can prioritize that piece because we've had, um, other things that I listed in what I talked about before that really need to be either voted on or, or decided on as well. So, um, I agree that this would certainly address our strategic plan or the gaps, but so were a lot of the other things that have been brought to the board have addressed that as well. So, I'm at a loss as to how we prioritize one over the other when we haven't had that, the deep discussions about the others either, yet.
So, are, are, are you leaning towards postponing this until, what? We had, we as a board have had a work session?
Yeah, I, I think we should have a work session and get this discussed through and decide. You know, something more concrete than, than, um, people after people coming here and say, you know, we want this or we've got, you need this or whatever and then we let it go and then somebody else comes with something and then we, you know, I, you know, maybe it just is nebulous to me and I've got all these things that people are asking the board to do, but we haven't, we haven't done any closure on it or prioritized them, you know? Um, for me to, to sit here last year, the, here with the information that was brought before us relative to the LRNC, that went away. Um, then we had, uh, uh, um, other things that were brought to the board relative to closing some of the gap issues too and I guess, I mean, I think this is a great idea, but I need to put it in context of all the others and cohesively have a discussion about it before I make a decision, maybe that's all I want to say. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a hard thing to do, it would be a deep discussion by the board, bringing all these things forward and kind of prioritizing them and being able to kind of be on one page about our thoughts. For me, that would be helpful, I, maybe not for everybody else.
I mean, I think it's clear, I mean, the word silos has been brought up a lot tonight and that kind of an issue and I, I mean, yeah, I think there, there does need to be a board, a board discussion about these things, a board work session about these things. I don't know whether that means that we postpone voting on the application and that kind of thing, um, or if, if it does, um, kind of looking for guidance from the board on that, so I know what to put on our agenda.
Can I, can I make a clarification? So, the, the application process is not going to be binding to you, so by allowing that to go forward, you would be able to gauge real interest in the program, at the same time buying yourself a little bit more time to get, then develop the, a more concrete cost. So, really separating, you could really separate those three questions, the, um, application, the lottery, the location, from the fourth question, which would be your budget, um, and then therefore you'd actually gauge that real interest, um, and buy yourself some time.
So, if you're suggesting that just taking the, the one slide of, just the one slide of the application process, this is the sixth, the sixth, what?
In the location.
Or location.
With, without, does he, without determining a location, it's going to be almost impossible to get you a, a real number in terms of, you would first have to have the application interest, which would then help determine what the, uh, the bus runs would be initially. That would then give you an indication of what your budget would be. Um, so, you know, going ahead with, can you go back to those slides and show the board, starting with the application process? If you did the application process, then going the next one, Brianna?
The lottery.
No, the next, the lottery process, determining what kind of process you would use and then, um, determining the location would at least give people a sense of, you know, what they would need to do if they had a true interest in the program. And in that way, you could gauge how many people would be in district, how many would be out of district, if you could get enough people to put together a class.
All those steps, Dr. Herdbeck, could really help codify interest and start to be able to actualize some of the implementation, even if the board would decide that it's a not-yet for the program, so that would be very helpful.
So, looking at this next vote from the perspective of strengthening a proposal and not so much the board saying, this is the application for a new, for a new program, this is the location of upcoming program, but saying, this is an application for a potential program, we want to gauge interest, is that what you're saying?
I think that's reasonable language, personally.
I mean, how do board members feel about, about doing that at the next meeting, talking through the different steps that we talked about, talking through the, um, accommodation pieces, but then also at the next meeting, having a work session? How do board members feel about?
I think that's the only way to go. You have to be concurrently talking about both.
Right. So, okay, Commissioner Torres?
I forgot what else, but it's me.
Oh, that's okay, I'll come back to you if you want, or do you want to?
Um, I think that the plan was to, uh, during the applic, during the mandatory informational meeting, um, gather information, uh, that even included, um, the, the addresses or the, the area where families interested in participating in the program were leaving, which would be important to decide whether option one or option two would be the most, uh, uh, would be the wiser choice to make.
Are you talking location, option one or two?
Correct, yes, uh, this one.
Oh, oh, you're talking the lottery?
Correct.
Okay, the lottery.
Yes. Uh, so, um, that, um, you know, having the opportunity to have that informational meeting would, uh, allow us to determine with more precision, not exactitude, but with more precision, uh, the impact in terms of budget, budget.
So, are you, Commissioner Torres, are you suggesting that the next time the board would vote on the location and the application process in order to gauge who might be interested in attending and they would know at least where the school was proposed?
Correct.
Okay.
According to the proposal, perhaps, um, the, the, the first baby step would be to begin with one school and one school centrally located, which is, who, which would have a lower impact in, in the, in the budget and perhaps on year two, an expansion of the program in a second building or within the same, the same building, I don't know, but, um, interest, there was. And, uh, yeah, I remember, uh, in response to, uh, Commissioner Humbleboil, I think that that conversation about the larger picture requires that the proponents of specific projects to target our weaknesses, uh, have concrete proposals in front of us and, and I don't know any other.
Yeah, right, and because they were, they've brought, been brought previously and that moved forward. Yeah, so I think we need to look at them all.
So, I think that we, I'm gonna just float something out there and, and see if this is something that might work for board members. We could actually have a work session before business as a board, I would think, we can just flip-flop as far as setting the agenda. So, we could have a work session as a board to discuss strategic, uh, to discuss current priorities, current work as it links to the strategic plan and perhaps a status update on different things and, and just a discussion. I think as far as the, um, and I think that that provide, that presents an opportunity for also the different liaisons to these committees to have a discussion for, for, um, budget and revenue and, you know, I'm just thinking, not in, in a surface way, just to have a conversation. Um, and that could perhaps be the majority, you know, we'd leave, we'd leave some significant time for that. But then as far as this is concerned, what we would move forward with would be approval of, consider approval of, uh, up or down vote for application process for a potential program with the six detailed steps and then a proposed location. So, those would be the two things that we would consider as individually considered resolution items. Does that sound okay to board members, having those two pieces of our agenda?
Would you also have the lottery?
No, I believe that what, and I, and I believe Commissioner Torres articulated that we, that the, the feedback received and the, the demographics of the individuals who, who are interested would help, uh, inform the lottery proposal. If that summarizes what you said. Okay. Commissioner Humbleboil?
So, this is kind of different than we talked before and I know, Brianna, you were concerned about families trusting if they go through the process, but this would be dip-sticking our toe out there and they would be very well aware that we are just gathering information.
Yeah, I wouldn't, um, I would do the PR as an informational meeting, not a step one of the application process. We would be informing them of the application process if it was, but in gathering information- We would be informing them of the application process if it was, but in gathering information, yes.
How do board members feel about moving forward in that way? With this, with the work session and then this, these limited areas to move forward? Okay?
I'm fine with that.
I'm seeing, people seem to be okay with that. So we'll put those items on the agenda then. You have the Secretary, Everson? Okay. I know we've been all over the place, so. And we get to do it all in the public, that's how school boards work, so. Any other comments on this piece? Anyone in the audience have questions? Okay, seeing none? Did you have anything else? No, okay. I'm good. Thank you very much. Okay, so that takes us then to requests for future agenda items. Are there any such requests? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favors, please signify by saying aye, aye. All right, meeting is adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.